The broadcast of the Minneapolis City Council meeting will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call to order this adjourned meeting for Friday, August 13th. Before we proceed, I'll note that we have remote participation by council members and city staff as authorized under the provisions of open meeting law, Section thirteen D point zero two one, due to the declared state of local public health emergency. The city will be recording and posting this meeting to the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public participation, access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. I'll note that due to some construction issues at City Hall, this meeting is unable to be broadcast live on YouTube, but it is being broadcast on all of the other channels, and it will be uploaded to the YouTube after this meeting is complete. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Osman.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Allison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Vice President Jenkins.
Present.
President Bender.
Here.
There are thirteen members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? See none? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. We have two items on today's agenda. The first item under unfinished business is reconsidering the mayor's veto of the Rent Stabilization Charter Amendment, which proposes to establish a limited right of initiative for a rent stabilization policy. I'll recognize the clerk first to provide instructions for considering the mayor's veto. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. As you indicated, the first item is a reconsideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine. That pertains to a proposed charter amendment which, if adopted, would establish a means for enacting a rent stabilization policy via initiative petition. Mayor Frye vetoed that ordinance this past Friday. The mayor's objections were submitted in a letter that was circulated to all council members that same day and which was also posted for public access that same day in LIMs. The legislative history for that proposal is available in LIMs file number twenty twenty-one one oh four. Pursuant to the City Charter, Section four point four C three and as provided under Council Rule eight, Section eight, this ordinance is now back before the council for its automatic reconsideration. The matter stands as it was originally passed by the council and cannot be further amended or modified. The motion that's prescribed now before the council is as follows. Shall the decision of the city council stand notwithstanding the veto of the mayor? An affirmative vote is a vote to override the mayor's veto and to approve the ordinance as it was originally passed by the city council at its meeting last Friday. A negative vote is a vote that sustains the mayor's veto. In order to successfully overturn the mayor's veto of this ordinance, there must be an affirmative vote from at least two-thirds of the council's membership. That means there must be a minimum of nine affirmative votes. If the veto is overturned, then the proposed amendment will be referred to voters as a ballot question at the November second general election. If the veto is sustained, then the proposed amendment fails, and it will not be referred to voters at the general election. In conclusion, the motion on reconsideration of this ordinance is before the body. A minimum of nine affirmative votes is required to override the veto. I'll defer to you, Madam President, to facilitate any discussion amongst the council members. Otherwise, I stand ready to call the roll on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any questions about the instructions the clerk just gave? Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate all the conversation that went into this and that we've had about this topic. And I want to reiterate that I support developing a rent stabilization policy. I am proud of the work that we've done as a council in partnership with community to create more affordable housing and help protect renters. Rent stabilization is an important part of our housing strategy and will help improve the lives of countless renters across our city. The other charter amendment, which we put on the ballot if passed by voters this fall, will allow us to develop a rent stabilization policy. There is broad interest in doing so from council members, and the study we commissioned from Cura, at least in my estimation, supports development of a policy. The details will be determined by bringing all stakeholders to the table, using data and the experiences of other cities. Adjusting is needed to improve results, and it will happen through our well-established and public legislative process. I support that. As for this alternative approach that's before us, I've spent a lot of time carefully listening and considering the perspective of others. I appreciate everyone who has weighed in. I see merit in points you've made. Every council member makes their decisions differently. For me, when it comes to charter amendments, I believe that we should only put amendments to the city's constitution on the ballot for voter approval if we believe that the amendment itself should be approved. A number of my colleagues believe it should, but I don't. At committee, I raised concerns and voted against this amendment. Since then, I have considered and weighed additional information and continue to have concerns that initiative via referendum is not a best practice for this complex issue or that it will produce a well-rounded policy which does the most good and stands the test of time. For example, making even a minor tweak to this policy set through this path would require someone to go collect thousands of signatures. That's just not a good way to legislate. And perhaps if this was structured in a different way, I could support it, but I cannot at this time. I believe our existing legislative process will produce a better policy through a better process. And should voters approve the rent stabilization amendment that we put on the ballot, I will do my part to help develop and pass a policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to discuss a little bit about, I think, you know, my family history as landlords and how multifamily housing has played a significant role in in my family's ability to to not necessarily build wealth, but to have a part of what we talk about as the American dream. And so in the early nineteen twenties, my great-great aunt Ella moved to Chicago from Tuskegee, Alabama, and bought a rooming house. And in that rooming house, and this is a story that is pretty well documented in a book called The One of Other Sons, about the black, the great black migration. She bought a rooming house and she was able to have a place for people to stay, to escape from the brutal realities of Southern America. Jim Crow, black codes, lynchings, all kinds of things that were, I will add legislatively and legally on our books, on in the law. And so that start enabled many of my other family members, including my grandmother, to move to Chicago and then subsequently buy rental property of their own. That tradition was passed down to my mother, who moved to Minneapolis and bought a rental property. I subsequently owned a rental property. And we have been collectively trying to make a safe, affordable, decent place to live. In in my case, almost every single one of my tenants over the past twenty-two years has been a single mom raising their children. And so I I believe that there has to be some kind of consideration for small, what we have determined in these conversations to be mom-and-pop operations. And I'm deeply concerned about the issues of no exclusions, no carve-outs, no considerations around what are the real and distinct realities between the fourteen percent of the properties that are owned by mom-and-pop operations here in the city and the multinational corporations that many of us, myself included, feel like we need to rein in to this reality of of life in America and and the rationale, the reasons why people are spending fifty, sixty, seventy percent of their income on rent. And so consequently, like Councilmember Johnson, I supported a rent stabilization plan or charter amendment to be put on the books that the voters can vote on, fair and representative democracy, as people have talked about. And, you know, I I I think that when we are having these major policy discussions, we can't start from the premise that there's not going to be any kind of compromise. We we have to bring everybody to the table and do the really difficult, hard work of coming to some kind of consensus and agreement. So those are my concerns, and I just wanted to put that out on the table. That is one of the the reasons why I chose to abstain in those earlier votes, even though I've been assured by our city attorneys that there is no conflict of interest other than my own sense of moral and personal righteousness. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I put myself in queue to speak, but first I just did want to clarify with the clerk. Mr. Clerk, I know you said you stood ready to call the roll after discussion. Is, we haven't had many veto, mayoral vetoes. Is is there a motion in front of the committee sort of automatically based on on the process? And can you clarify what that is, or if not, if we need to make a motion?
Yes, Madam President, under the charter and council rules, the motion is automatically brought back in front of the council, and the motion is as follows. Shall the decision of the city council stand notwithstanding the veto of the mayor? And if the council has nine affirmative votes, then the ordinance that was passed last Friday is finally adopted.
Great, thank you. We can clarify this later as well, but just to put the same words in another way, and an I vote would be to a vote to override the veto. Okay, thank you. That was what I understood, but I wanted to make sure we were all clear. So then I do want to just speak to this as as one of the authors of the original ordinance. As Council Vice President just just illustrated so eloquently, we do have thousands of small landlords in our city. We also know that eighty percent of the rental units in our city are owned by fifteen percent of landlords. So like many things, there's a lot of consolidation of wealth within our rental housing market in a city where more than half of our constituents are renters. I support this option, which again is to establish a limited right of initiative for folks in our city to propose a rent stabilization policy. Similar to the charter amendments that have come forward from signature campaigns, that would first need thousands of signatures from people in Minneapolis to be considered. And then subsequently would go to the ballot so that every single voter in the city of Minneapolis would be able to weigh in. So that's what we're talking about today. Creating a narrow, limited process for people in Minneapolis to propose a rent stabilization policy to go on the ballot. We're responding to a state law that says we have to do this additional step of getting the blessing from the people on a ballot in order to consider a rent stabilization policy at all. It's a type of legal preemption that is specific to rent stabilization policies. I support this option because I know how important rent stabilization is as part of our overall housing strategies. Right now in Minneapolis, a landlord can increase rent by any amount at any time. And lack of control over price gouging is leaving our most vulnerable neighbors at risk of displacement and homelessness. We saw that in the data that Cura presented, where like a lot of things, there's a kind of typical standard business practice. And then at the edges, for those who are most vulnerable, those are the same folks that are seeing the largest price gouging increases in our city. In Mayor Frye's veto, he argued that low-income renters can't be trusted to craft a policy for consideration by every Minneapolis voter. He called renters who make up more than half of our city's population a special interest group. At the same time, the mayor argued that a policy crafted behind closed doors at City Hall would have to go on a future ballot as well. Let's be clear, there are special interests in our city who want to make it as difficult as possible to pass a policy that puts a camp, a cap on their unlimited income. These are the same folks who are at the table behind closed doors at City Hall. We have fought over the past two terms to change things, to open up the doors of City Hall and get workers and renters at the table, and it has been a fight. It was a fight to get workers represented on the group that advises the city about worker protections and a fight to set up a housing advisory committee that includes the voices of renters and folks who've experienced homelessness. But those things can go away, and all of that progress can be lost. These are the same folks who wants to streamline decisions and silence the voices of the people of Minneapolis. These things are related. It is about restoring power to the wealthiest, most powerful people in our city. The council members who are arguing for an ordinance version of this charter amendment will need to step up and do the hard work to get it done. There are folks who serve on the council who've never authored an ordinance like that, who really don't know how much it takes to move something like that through the city's policymaking process. I've learned how to make policy from council members who have really different political views. You know, the council members who step up and lead policy don't always agree. I've learned from council members Camp Gordon, Elizabeth Glidden, Lisa Goodman. But not all council members do that kind of work. And so again, I really hope that the council members who are speaking in favor of an ordinance path are the ones that will step up and work to get something in front of the people who will actually commit to a transparent process where all stakeholders are at the table. That is not the status quo at City Hall, and it will take a lot of work over many years, I predict, to get this done. Thanks. Next in queue is Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted the opportunity to speak to this as one of only a couple of renters on the council, and I think it's really important that renters' perspectives are front and center in this policy. And I just, I just want to share how important it is that everybody understand and that we all acknowledge the vulnerability that comes with not having such a policy. The vulnerability that comes with not having a rent stabilization policy in place so that every year when our leases are renewed, there's always that feeling in the pit of your stomach. Is this going to be the year that something sudden happens and I suddenly have to uproot my life? Is is this going to be the year where something unexpected happens that that destabilizes my home? And we can protect people from that feeling, and we can help people feel confident that they are connected to the community that they live in, that they are stable in the community that they live in. We are talking about policies, and by the way, when you look at the aggregate, rent increases in Minneapolis have been very modest, and that means most landlords are not doing sudden increases. It's not going to affect most landlords. But when it does happen, it's happening in a way that's strategic. It's happening in a way where that creates turnover when that's beneficial for property owners. It's happening in a way that makes everybody feel a little bit vulnerable and like they have a little bit less leverage in their relationship to their housing and like they have a little bit less stability in their homes. And so we should absolutely pass this policy. People are asking us for the opportunity to be involved in crafting that policy. I am offended at the idea that renters are a special interest. Renters are a majority of the residents of the city. And it is critical that renters be centered in policies that impact renters' experience. I'll be voting to override the mayor's veto, and I encourage all of my colleagues to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Council President. Like, I I really appreciate everybody who's spoken so far. And really, I'll keep my comments brief because I feel like Councilmember Fletcher really articulated a lot of what I wanted to articulate. Today is that we are not sitting here debating whether or not we should have referendums all the time. We have a state law, as Council President spelled out, that really mandates that we pass a policy in a specific way. This isn't a slippery slope. This isn't opening up the doors. I think that all of the good governance debates here are sort of nullified by the fact that there aren't many other state laws written in this way and creating these kinds of barriers. And I think that we're going to need every single one of the tools available to us in order to have an effective policy. And yes, renters in our city, the residents of our city, are capable of crafting responsible, well-researched, thought-out policy. And if someone proposes a policy that doesn't keep in mind small landlords, if someone passes a policy that's too lenient or too strict, the people of Minneapolis will not pass that policy. But what this does is it gives everyone a voice in how this comes together, and it allows us to address some of this specific ways. So I I hope that all of my colleagues will support this. You know, as again, as one of the authors, I'm, I I am, I am encouraged by the fact that no matter what happens today, we will be seeing a rent stabilization policy go to the ballot. And that's a big deal because when I, because my first year in office, when I came in office, people laughed at the idea that we could pass a policy like this. The enterprise did not think that we would be ever be able to pass a policy like this, and here we are in a position to do it. I think that while it's great for us to have half the tools in our toolbox moving forward, I think that if we, if since we're here and we're doing it, we should do it right. We should do it the right way, and that means overriding the mayor's veto today. So I hope that we can have the support of all my colleagues, and I just want to thank all of my my co-authors for for really championing this and making this policy go from being something that was not doable just three years ago to something that's now going to be on the ballot one way or another. So, thank you.
All right, there is some chat. I just need to go past Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the conversation and the discussion. It's good to hear from people during this. I am still committed to the original proposal. I didn't, I don't quite understand the logic and the rationale that the mayor is offering in the letter. I also want to just mention a few things. One of the things is that Saint Paul is doing this, our nearby neighbor, absolutely has this in place and has for a long time, and the world hasn't ended over there. In fact, they're moving forward with an initiative this year that can be approved by the voters. It's a normal democratic process that's used there. And they have limited initiative and referendum, but they actually have it more than we do. And I don't think there's any history of it being reckless or leading to unintended consequences. I noticed in the mayor's letter, too, he talks about how this option somehow closes the door on accountability and discussion. This option provides opportunity for robust debate and discussion and for everybody to weigh in when something's on the ballot, and there's a proposal to be reviewed, including the experts that he seems to think wouldn't be able to weigh in, including elected officials who we are welcome on our free time and independently to campaign on any initiative and ballot measure and campaign we want to. And and it would absolutely be accountable to city process of elections, which is how we actually get our certificates to represent the people here. So if you don't believe in those elections and you don't think that they're accountable or they don't allow people to be involved and engaged, then we have a much deeper problem than we think. I actually think this pathway of the people bringing something forward and the residents offers a great check and balance, too, on what could happen downtown here in City Hall and with government controlling it. I think if we don't have an option for something to come forward from the people, the pressure for us to do nothing or to do less would be greater and greater and greater. I think back to when we approved ranked choice voting in the city of Minneapolis, which we now do on a normal basis. At that time, there were two pathways that we were looking at. One was to put something in the charter. A charter amendment was written, petitions were gathered, and it was moving forward. And that is what absolutely motivated the city council at the time to say, wait a minute, we think we can do something that might be better than that. We're going to take that into consideration, and we're going to propose something through our ordinance system. It was motivating. It actually led to a much bigger and broader discussion about it. And actually, just the effort to get something on the ballot and to amend the charter helped people get educated and made it very clear that people supported this effort and wanted it to go forward. That provided a check and balance and a motivation. I think the same thing happened when efforts came forward, even even though they were thwarted by the city and our attorney's office with minimum wage and other things. When the ballot initiatives are a possibility, it helps the council and the elected officials do a better job of representing their constituents. I also happen to think it's just good government when we empower people. The mayor seems concerned that a a single group will lead this effort somehow. Well, if a single individual has a great idea and that single individual is able to convince others that it's a good idea to refine that idea and to put it on the ballot, and then actually to win a majority of the voters supporting it, maybe it was a good idea. And maybe it's something that we should do because maybe it was a good idea, and maybe it's something that we should do, because we believe in democracy, and we believe that a majority voice should carry the day and should make a difference. And that absolutely, this pathway is a way to get a broader community involved in things and bring it forward. I'll note that just yesterday, we also heard from our Housing Advisory Committee. They took a vote, and they support these two pathways going forward, probably for a lot of the same reasons that the rest of us support it, and thousands and thousands of people support it in the city of Minneapolis. And they support it because they know what we're doing right now is putting something on the ballot that will be allowing something in the future. We're not even deciding on it now. So if you don't like the idea of having the voters bring something forward through initiative, a program, a rent stabilization program, then vote against this, campaign against this idea when it's on the ballot, but at least give the voters a chance to decide. I'm very, very interested to see if the people of Minneapolis would like this pathway to initiative and referendum. This would be a great way for us to see if maybe we could open up our democracy even more. And if they don't, if they decide they don't want this authority through initiative, well, then we'll get that message loud and clear, and we'll get it at the ballot box. We don't have to decide for them now. We don't have to let what would be five of us deciding that you don't get to vote on this now. That would be anti-democratic, and that would not give us the information that we need to better understand the people and to move our city forward. I think we absolutely should let the majority of the council, a supermajority in this case of nine of us, and there were more of us voting for this in the past, to move forward with this proposal, so we can at least put it on the ballot to see if this initiative idea is something that the people want to have in terms of the authority in the future, so that they could develop a program and at least have this check and balance back on the council, so that we can not be subject to so much of that pressure that the council president mentioned of the special interest to refining a program so that it somehow meets some of the niche needs and the pressures that we have here, but so that we have the option to have something on the ballot that would have to earn the votes of all the people, our majority of the people sitting in Minneapolis. I'm happy to use up another seven minutes, if you'd like, Madam President.
Thanks, Councilmember. I was just getting a note from my staff that it seems that this meeting's broadcast on the website is not working as well. Does that, does anyone know if that's the case?
Technical team, is that, is that a true statement? Are we not broadcasting on the city website?
Give me, give us one second to check, and I'll, I'll update you. I believe we are, but hold on.
I can confirm we are still broadcasting on the website.
Yes, they may need to refresh their browser or try to use a different one.
Okay. Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to reiterate, there is a question that will be on the ballot that will allow the citizens, the residents, the renters, the landlords, whoever lives in Minneapolis, the opportunity to vote on whether we should have rent stabilization. So I, it's kind of disingenuous to say that, that people won't have that opportunity. However, I, I need, my question is, is there someone who can explain to me this narrow pathway that I keep hearing about, or this very specific option? I, I need to try to, I need to understand that more.
Council Vice President, can you repeat your question? I just want to make sure I know who.
Yes, my question is, I have not been communicated with by the authors of this thing, and so I don't understand the conversation around, there is a narrow path. There is a small window for, that limits the amount of referendums that we can bring forward. I, I need to understand that messaging.
I'm happy to speak to that as one of the authors, or Councilmembers Gordon and Allison may want to chime in or staff as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, and I keep getting messages about the broadcast, so I'm just going to focus on cherrying the meeting, and I'll just assume that what communications just told us is correct about the broadcast. So there is a state law, which we could pull up and share here, as well as reference folks who may be watching this, that is specific to laws that control rent. And that state statute is what says that in order for charter cities to be able to consider that a policy that would control rent, they need to have a direct vote on a ballot. Like many other kinds of laws, that's subject to interpretation in the courts. If there are lawsuits, of course, we've been sued around minimum wage, paid sick time, the section eight nondiscrimination ordinances, or renter protection ordinances. So there's often, you know, debate and discussion in the courts about the extent of state preemption over local decisions in a lot of these different laws. I think the reason that we were emphasizing the narrowness piece that you were talking about is because in St. Paul, the city of St. Paul has an open process for initiative and referendum, so that people in St. Paul can collect signatures and put a policy on the ballot for any number of policies, minimum wage, rent stabilization, et cetera. We are not proposing an open-ended initiative process. We are proposing an initiative process that would only allow initiative related to rent stabilization policy. And charter cities are allowed to do that, but we have to set up a process to do so. Right now, Minneapolis doesn't have a process for any kind of policy, but St. Paul does. Is that, is that helpful? I see Councilmember Gordon.
St. Paul is, it's in their charter, right?
Yes, and we are not proposing to amend the Minneapolis City Charter to allow for initiative for all kinds of policies, just narrowly to allow initiative for rent stabilization specifically.
I, I guess that leads me to another question. It has been stated that St. Paul is, that this is on the ballot in St. Paul. Is it, are they seeking signatures to put it on the ballot, or is it already a ballot initiative that the voters will be voting on in November? Can somebody clarify that?
More knowledgeable, there might be more knowledgeable people than I am, but I could talk to that a little bit. My understanding, Madam President?
Councilor Gordon, thanks.
Is that they had the adequate number of signatures, and they've submitted into Ramsey County for review, but that was about on the end of July. Perhaps our clerk's been paying more attention to know whether that's been certified, as the signatures were enough. And my understanding is, of course, they have a deadline to get it on the ballot about the same time that we do here in Hennepin County, and that they have met everything so far, so that they will have it on there. I'll prove that's clear. I'll also note that I put the actual ballot language for us as proposed, it was vetoed in the chat, which really clarifies that we would be adding the authority for registered voters of the city of Minneapolis to propose by initiative a rent stabilization ordinance to regulate rents on private residential property in the city of Minneapolis to be submitted to the qualified voters of the city of Minneapolis. So ours was initiative that's just about a rent stabilization ordinance.
And then I'm happy, since it's in the chat, I feel a little bit like I should just reference that in response to the Council Vice President's question. The state law in question is statute 471.9996, Rent Control Prohibited. It says, "No statutory or home rule charter city, county, or town may adopt or renew by ordinance or otherwise any law to control rents on private residential property, except as provided in subdivision two." And then it goes on a little bit more in subdivision one. Then that subdivision two is the section that describes exceptions, and it says, "In part, subdivision one does not preclude a statutory or home rule charter city, county, or town from controlling rents on private residential property to the extent that the city, county, or town has the power to adopt an ordinance, charter amendment, or law to control these rents if the ordinance, charter amendment, or law that controls rents is approved in a general election." So that is the state statute in question, and as we've heard in the different debates and communications, there is some, that is open to interpretation. So, for example, the mayor was arguing in his letter to us and statements that his interpretation is that if, if the voters vote for the amendment that you referenced, Council Vice President, that would allow an ordinance pathway, that that ordinance would also have to go on a future ballot to be ratified directly by the voters. So that will be for future policymakers to debate and decide based on advice from the city attorney's office and others about how much legal risk to take. And so that's all kind of an open-ended part of the future of this policy.
So it does open the door? Is that what you're saying?
So I guess my best summary is that if the voters of Minneapolis approve the charter amendment to allow the city council mayor to adopt an ordinance, and that ordinance is adopted, the policymakers of the city would then have to decide whether or not to put that on a ballot or take the risk of lawsuit and discussion in the courts to interpret state law.
Does our city attorney have any comments on this question?
I know Mr. Nielsen is here. In the past meeting, he is, the city attorney's office has advised that they believe the city should put something on an ordinance on the ballot in the future as well, but Mr. Nielsen can reiterate that.
Sure, Council President, Council Vice President, yes, I mean, that's likely what, you know, if we would get the path that's been approved by the council was not vetoed by the mayor would allow for the city council to craft as we normally do in our normal legislative processes, an ordinance. And then, as Council President noted, there would be the question of putting that ordinance on the ballot or not. And that would be an issue that could be addressed, you know, at that point. I, I did previously say that the city attorney's office, because we are in the business of providing advice to minimize legal risk, would advise the council at that time to put it on the ballot. But that is a question that could be addressed. It just, that amendment allows for the normal legislative process to occur. And then again, as, as has been stated, the citizen initiative path is a, is a different process pathway from that, from the council-originated path. And that is not an issue today. It's just the citizen initiative pathway that is before you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. I see Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Council President Bender. I was initially going to put myself in queue to read the state statute, but that, that occurred. And then, and then a question got asked, and I, and that question was answered. And so I think everything that I was going to address has been addressed, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Again, the motion before us is to override the mayor's veto on this question of creating a limited right of initiative for a rent stabilization policy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Nay.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
No.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Nay.
Vice President Jenkins.
Abstain.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are seven ayes, five nays, and one abstention.
That does not receive the nine votes necessary, so that fails, and the mayor's veto stands. That completes the work on that first item. We do have a second item on our agenda today under new business. This is proposed ballot language for the charter amendment on government structure. And I will turn this over to Mr. Carl for a brief summary of the status of this question.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, as the body is aware, this proposed amendment was initiated by the Charter Commission under its statutory authority pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 410.12, Subdivision 1. The full legislative history of this proposal is captured in Lim's file, number CH202112, which is shown on this slide. This proposal was first introduced last September by the Charter Commission. It was referred to the Commission's Government Structure Work Group, which was then tasked with developing that proposal. Over a period of six months, the work group studied municipal government structures, interviewed both current and former city-elected officials and department leaders, interviewed representatives from the cities of St. Paul, Duluth, and Rochester to discuss the government structures in those other first-class cities, and conducted two public hearings to gather community feedback. Ultimately, the Charter Commission adopted their work group's report with a recommended amendment at the meeting on April 7th, and then at its regular meeting on May 5th, the Charter Commission referred its proposal for an executive mayor-legislative council form of government to the city council for the setting of ballot language as required under Minnesota Statute, Section 410.12, Subdivision 4. The city council received and referred this proposed amendment to its Policy and Government Oversight Committee. Staff then provided versions of draft ballot language to that committee at meetings on May 6th, June 16th, July 21st, and August 4th. At the last committee meeting, the matter was postponed to the next regular cycle to be taken up at the Pogo meeting on August 18th. However, following the council's regular meeting this past Friday, that matter was discharged from the committee and is now before the full body for its consideration. As I've previously reported, the city attorney's office found this proposal is constitutional. It does not conflict with any applicable state or local law, and it is therefore a proper subject for a home rule charter. A resolution with draft ballot language was submitted, and for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll quickly go over that language. So the main question on the ballot is, shall the Minneapolis City Charter be amended to make the city council the city's legislative body, to remove the executive committee, and to make the mayor the city's chief executive officer and administrative authority, with the general nature of those amendments indicated in the explanatory note, which is made part of the ballot? The first point on the explanatory language is that the amendment, if adopted, would divide municipal powers and functions between an elected chief executive, the mayor, and an elected legislative body, the city council. It would define the city councils being the city's legislative body with all legislative policymaking and oversight authority, and remove reference to governing body. The city council would continue to appoint and discharge the city clerk. The city council would be required to fund nonpartisan administrative staff and could also choose to fund their own aides, as they do now. It would require the city council to establish an independent city auditor's office in charge of audit services for the city's finances and operations, and an audit committee to oversee the city auditor's office. The audit committee would appoint the auditor for a term of at least four years, and the city council would remove the auditor for cause. It would eliminate the executive committee and its role in appointments, suspensions, and the discharge of officers. It would define the mayor as being the city's chief executive officer and administrative authority. The mayor would appoint, with the city council's consent, the heads of the charter departments and other appointed officers, unless the charter or any applicable law provided otherwise. All employees appointed by the mayor would have a four-year term coinciding with the mayor's term, and could be disciplined and discharged by the mayor. And finally, it would define the city's administration under the authority of the mayor's being all administrative and operating departments not under the city council or another board or commission created by the charter. The city council, its committees, and members would not be allowed to issue orders to, to direct or to supervise those departments' employees under the city's administration, nor request information not classified as public data. nor request information not classified as public data. The city council may seek information or assistance from the city's administration and the mayor must furnish any information that the city council requests to carry out its legislative function. So the action presented to the council today is to adopt the draft ballot language that was prepared by the city attorney's office, which I just read, and direct the city clerk to transmit that ballot question to the county auditor or to take such other action that transmits the proposal to the voters in an acceptable form within the statutory timeline for the submission of ballot questions. That completes my brief summary.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Clerk has presented this amendment. Is there a motion or discussion? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. I first have one clarifying question and then I'll have a motion. And the clarifying question is, when I delayed this, it was delayed for the purpose of seeing if we had feedback from the courts on the status of explanatory notes. My understanding is that we do not yet. Is that correct?
Council President Bender, to Councilmember Fletcher's question, we have not heard any direct, we have not had any confirmation from the court.
Thank you. So when I made the motion last time, colleagues, you know, I felt like it made sense to wait until we heard from the courts. I understand now, you know, in the, in the action that followed that, the authors of the rent stabilization amendment added explanatory note language to that. So it's, this sort of doesn't feel like, as, as critical an issue. It feels like we're, we're going to have at most a mixed approach to this, you know, moving forward. And I think the Councilmember Palmasano's motion to move this forward to today, I think is respectful of the mayor's reinvigorated right to veto. And so I'm comfortable moving this today. I'll go ahead and move it forward. I think that we have made some improvements. I think that, that staff's response to the direction that we gave in the earlier meeting where we amended the language does at least achieve the goal of writing this in a way that shows that this has an impact, which I think is very important. I think it's important that we, that voters understand when they read this that this is language that actually makes a real change that people will experience in the way they experience their city government, that it is not merely clarifying. And I think this language moves us in that direction enough that I'm comfortable supporting it. And so I'll make the motion to approve this language.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't really have much more to add than Councilmember Fletcher. I, I too, like him, moved this thinking we would have a firm answer from the courts on the explanatory note piece. But at this point, I think we can all agree just to be done and to be consistent on the ballot. So, thank you and thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you. I put myself in queue just to briefly comment. I know we've had a lot of discussion, both in public and offline, about the details of this description. I, I agree that it has moved in a direction of more accurately reflecting the actual language of the charter amendment itself. I would really encourage folks to read the actual charter amendment itself. I think it is subject to interpretation, like our current charter is as well. And the outcomes will depend a lot on how it is implemented over time. No matter what folks decide, like Councilmember Fletcher, I do think that this language reflects the significant change that people in the city will experience in their government if this passes. So I feel much more comfortable approving this language than I did some previous versions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano. Councilmember Kano. Is absent. Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that item passes and will be forwarded to Mayor Frye for his decision on this resolution. With that, we have completed our agenda. I will note that this afternoon, Mayor Frye will be giving his budget address. Like last year, we're doing this a little differently. I, I just want to say, I could have insisted that the mayor come to one of our Zoom meetings and give his speech, but he'll be releasing a video like last year with the budget address. Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry to remember what time that will be released. Do you happen to know?
It will be at 1 o'clock, Madam President.
Thank you. So, and that will just be on all of the regular venues, the city's website, the way that you would watch our council meetings. So Mayor Frye will be releasing a video budget address this afternoon. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is an adjourned council meeting, but generally, we do have announcements at the end of our council meetings. And I, I just wanted to announce that this is Black August, which is a, August is a month that has had numerous significant moments in African-American history, including the, the march on Washington on August 25th. But also, August has historically been and is this weekend, Black Pride, POC Pride in the city of Minneapolis. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and congratulate the organizers of MN POC Pride and their events this weekend to, to celebrate and recognize the history, the contributions of African-American, people of color, queer, identified folks in our community. So happy POC Pride.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, we have completed our agenda. We have nothing further before the council today. So without objection, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming to today's adjourned meeting.